To order. Everybody please stand for the.
Foundation of the God and the municipal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vanessa, do you please take the roll?
Commissioner Spielvogel.
Here.
Commissioner Vogler.
Here.
We have a board, then we will proceed. Um, we are being livestreamed, so anyone that would have any comments to be made through the public, you can email me at elspielvogel@lawrencecountypa.gov. And we will get them into the minutes for our next meeting. Um, I don't see any, uh, row officers other than what we already have on the agenda for today. Um, so we'll move forward from there. Also, next on the agenda, we have public comments. Anybody wishing to make a public comment? Yes?
Yes, please.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, good morning.
Good morning. Uh, can I ask where is Morgan today? Is he well or?
He's absent today. He's just absent, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Um, so I, I have a couple, a couple questions.
Sure.
Um, is the, are the commissioners aware? Well, I know you're aware. The, um, because you live in your office, you fill out a very nice log of the meeting minutes. Your books are bound and published. Um, so that the public can come in and at any time be presented with the meeting minutes. And they are available online, which is wonderful. Um, but the election board is also supposed to have bound meeting minutes so that the public can go in at any time and review those minutes. Um, I have been in there three times, um, and asked to see meeting minutes and they cannot be produced. I'm, I'm sure the commissioners are aware that I have a public partner's appeal for meeting minutes for the election board. Um, and if I understand, Mr. Germani has been appointed as the interim director. Um, do you have a, uh, a meeting scheduled coming up for the election board? You know, as far as discussions on the future election director or going forward? Is there any meeting planned this way?
What, what we do, um, with public comment is we take your comments, we will note them into the minutes of the meeting. And if you wanted to schedule a meeting separately with either any one of us or at any point in time, you could certainly do so. But the optic of the public comment is just to present the comments to us. And then we'll look forward to the meeting.
Okay.
So.
Just simple question.
Sure.
Mm-hmm. Well, um, I guess that's as far as I can go then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me say this in case you have, in case you were planning to leave and you're welcome to stay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Board of Elections did meet, uh, within the last week and a half and did name Mr. Germani the director. He's no longer the acting director.
Oh, I thought it was just interim.
No, no, he is, he is the director now. He takes Mr., excuse me, he takes Mr. Allison's place. Um, I don't believe we have a, a, a meeting scheduled at this time of the Board of Elections. I don't think there's one that's been formally scheduled. It's essentially whenever the director comes to us and says, hey, we need to have a meeting for such and such a purpose. And then, of course, we put a legal ad in the paper indicating that the meeting is being held. Um, obviously, uh, there will certainly be at least one meeting between now and the primary election. And, uh, uh, one of the things we talked about at the, uh, election board meeting, uh, is that a week or two weeks ago? I lose track of time.
It was last, last week.
Was it last Tuesday? Thank you.
It was last week.
Uh, one of the things we talked about was the uncertainty right now as to whether or not the primary election is going to be held on May twenty, no, excuse me, May seventeen. It's currently scheduled for May seventeen. But because of what's happening in Harrisburg as it relates to redistricting of both the, the federal, uh, US House districts and then separately, the Pennsylvania State Senate and State House districts. They're on two different tracks, if you will. But neither of them have yet been finally resolved and put into place. And there remains some uncertainty as to whether or not that will all get accomplished in time for the primary to be held on May seventeen. So we're, we're sitting here waiting to see the results of that or the outcome of that. We're planning as if there will be a primary on May seventeen. Uh, but we're, we're keeping the option open that, that based upon, again, what happens in Harrisburg may resolve in the, the primary perhaps happening a few weeks after that. Uh, but that all being said, uh, we will, I'm sure the Board of Elections will have at least one meeting between now and May seventeen, possibly more.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, yeah, I did want to make note that Mr. Germani is now the, uh, uh, director of, of that office.
If I could just make one, uh, comment then, could, is it possible to put a, publish an announcement on the website when the election board meetings will be? Because not everybody gets the Newcastle news.
No, I, I have no.
They are on, they're on the website when the meetings happen. That's why I said if you wanted to, to meet with us separately, you could do that. Because there, one question leads to the next and to the next, and these things have already been handled and taken care of. And as Mr. Vogler already said, that there are so many, um, so many things up in the air right now that they, we could have a lot of conversation on it. That, that's the reason why it was said, because we had already had a meeting. You know, it was published, it was posted, it was in the newspaper, it was on our website. So those are things that, seriously, if you do wish to, to contact and have a meeting, absolutely, we can do that. Because there are lots of things that are up in the air. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. We move on to fiscal and contractual. And the first on our agenda is, uh, repository property. Resolution for discussion and possible approval of or rejection of repository property number thirty-three dash one-two-six-three-zero-zero. Resolution states, it might be resolved by Lawrence County Commissioners that the board is authorized to execute a bid acceptance form accepted bid made by Timothy McKinney in the amount of five hundred dollars for repository property located on Route one sixty-eight and having parcel ID number thirty-three dash one-two-six-three-zero-zero Taylor Township. Do you have a motion?
Yes, I'll move, and then may I ask a quick question, uh, with that, please?
Mm-hmm.
We have a number for that.
This will be number ten.
Thank you. I'll move for approval.
And I will second.
And may I also make a comment, please?
Oh, yes, comments.
Uh, and, and, and I don't want to jump ahead of you. You were probably going to make note of this fact, but, uh.
I was.
Then I.
I bet you're lying. I wanted to go ahead with the motion and then, then just say that it has been approved by the, um, the municipality, the supervisors have approved the, the bid acceptance. And so therefore, we can move ahead with the motion to accept it. I do pay attention to meeting standards. Any further discussion? Very men? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. And that's the only one for that. We have no bids and proposals, no receipts. We do have a warrant registered January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. I will take the motion when ready.
I'll move for, uh, acceptance of the warrant register as submitted.
I will second. Any further comments? Very none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same side? Okay, motion carries, very good. And we'll get to our minutes, approval of the minutes. I'll take a motion when ready.
I'll move for adoption of the minutes as submitted.
And I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side. Motion carries. We have no written communications. Um, time to report, staff reports, anything other than what you guys are reading for? All right, so Commissioner Reports and Comments, uh, Morgan is not here. So I'm next on deck and, um, just briefly, uh, hopefully everybody survived the, the snowstorm that was predicted. And oddly enough, the new, the, the forecasters were correct. Yes, um, it was difficult. I just wanted to, um, acknowledge those that had to get on the road, whether it was for work or to clean those roads as part of their job. And nothing, you know, as far as that goes is easy. I know just for ourselves, I got a call from Frank McCary yesterday, um, that he had, you know, some people, some of the maintenance employees to get out there that generally drive our trucks and do the salting and plowing. Some of them were stuck in their driveways and couldn't get out. So Jeff, hopefully nine-one-one got taken care of at the best that it could be considering.
Yeah, considering the source, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely, and we take that in, uh, we know.
Yeah.
We're fortunate enough, we got all of our employees in.
Good, that's right, you know, I almost texted you yesterday.
That's the main thing, we make sure we try to get our people with some state after too.
Yeah, to see if you, you.
Because of what was going on, so.
That you had enough to man the, the fence, I think that's great. But I, I think, you know, once something like that happens, you can either, you know, handle it in a positive way or, you know, people handle it differently and maybe get more upset. And I, I just hope that everyone managed to get through their day and, and, um, needed to go where they needed to be, and if they didn't, it was okay that they weren't there, they need arrangements. And that employers were understanding that their employees could not get out of their driveways and roads were not able to get plowed. You know, they only have a certain amount of trucks in certain municipalities and, and they can only do what they can do. And that's, that was coming down, it wasn't free. So I, I, I wanted to comment on that and, um, I know Dan, as you were going to mention about the Martin Luther King service that was being canceled, I'll leave that to, to you, but, uh, yeah. We celebrate Martin Luther King, dude, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, uh. Commissioner Spielvogel referenced the fact that, uh, because of the heavy snow that we received, normally on Martin Luther King Day, there's a march, uh, that starts at the old West Side School, um, over in the sixth ward, and it goes down to the diamond. And because of the heavy snow and the cold temperatures, uh, the decision was made by the organizers to, uh, to not have it this year, it was probably a wise decision for everybody's safety. Um, the, uh, um, there was a, an online service on Sunday evening. Uh, Pastor Hogan's from St. Luke's Church, uh, was instrumental in that. And I believe the AACP had a role to play in that as well. And, uh, I, I, uh, participated by way of Zoom. It was a very moving, uh, tribute, very, very moving service. I, I want to follow up on Commissioner Spielvogel's comments about the fact that there are people that when we get weather like this, they have to respond. And, uh, it's not easy work. But I do want to give special credit to our maintenance department. Uh, I, I rolled in here this morning about ten to seven, and the lots were cleared, the sidewalks were cleared. We did have jurors come in today. At least maybe approximately eighty of them.
Right.
So, uh, we, I do want to single out our maintenance folks, uh, for all the hard work they do and, uh, clearing off the sidewalks and the parking lots. And, uh, I believe that's all I have today. Thank you.
I think you covered them. Very good, very good. Okay, we'll get to, uh, business, and we have several resolutions. It's coming before us, Mr. Board of Commissioners from the District Attorney's Office. We have a resolution to implement the SAVEN program.
Yes.
Chrissy Moniz here?
Yes. And this is just a renewal, a resolution for renewal for SAVEN, which helps, um, private victims, um, be notified when, uh, in jail, released from jail.
Very important, very important, I'm trying to, very important, sign out to renew, yes, most definitely. And, um, I don't see any problem with that at all? Dan, any questions for, for Chris?
No, thank you for bringing it to our attention. I think this time of year, it's a natural thing and I'm happy to.
Yes.
It's a number eleven.
Eleven.
Zero-one-one, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve resolution eleven as proposed.
And I will second. Any further discussion? Very men? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, we do have next on the agenda is, um, motion to, uh, discuss and approve our COVID policy update uh, for employee handbook. And I know we've had a, a lot of different discussion on this, um, because it does change a lot. The CDC changes guidelines and procedures that, um, you know, we, we, we follow the CDC guidelines as, as best as we can. Um, and we also, um, we have extended, the one thing that I can say is that we have extended the, um, policy to allow some of the tested positive for COVID to receive five days off so that they could be home and, uh, make themselves well and not be exposed to others. Um, as, as you may recall, our last, uh, the CARES grant had specifics in there that, that we were obligated to do such things. And, um, we did have it in our policy up and through twenty, or the end of twenty twenty-one. Um, we, as a board, you know, think that we still need to continue, especially, you know, that, that we're not out of the woods with the shed and we don't know what's going to happen. We're continuing to have the positive cases even with the vaccines and precautions that people are taking. We felt it necessary that we should offer additional days for twenty twenty-two that will allow the, the, those that are infected employees that do end up getting COVID, allow them to have those five days paid as terms of the absences. And the county is, is being proactive with doing that. So, um, that being said, that's all I have. Dan, anything extra for you or?
I do have a quick question, maybe you or Joe can help me with this. Item six, which is way at the bottom of page two.
Yes.
Uh, states FF-CRA benefits as of, it states here December thirty-one, twenty twenty. Is, is that year accurate or should that read twenty twenty-one? And I, I honestly don't know.
That's a very good question.
I think that, I think that FF-CRA is correct in twenty because then we voluntarily gave days in twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
With that ending uh, Dec- December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Of twenty twenty-one.
And now maybe that line needs to be added? Or let me see what it says on the resolution. Hang on, let's see. Uh, no, it doesn't say. It's just very, very simply stated.
Well, our records would have that.
We have everything you've just said, yes, yes.
What you just said would be in the record.
Yes.
The other thing, and I, I think the language covers it because we have a little bit of a gap here. Uh, as you just pointed out, the, the, the period did end on December thirty-one of twenty twenty-one.
Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm.
We're sitting here on the eighteenth of January. So, uh, in talking with solicitor, it was a little bit of concern for that retroactivity
Yes.
for that approximately three-week period of this calendar year. But I think when it states here, uh, Lawrence County is voluntarily granting employees five cumulative day, cumulative days of permissive absence within the calendar year twenty twenty-two.
Right.
I would say that covers it because then it would cover starting January one.
January one.
So I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, if you're comfortable, otherwise we could, you know, we could amend. But I, I think if you're comfortable, I am as well.
Yeah, and then, and the solicitor has said.
He, right.
Uh, that, that at least he said to me, and I'm hoping maybe he said to the two of you.
Yes.
This, this would, or this gap that started on January one, so it's at least till today of, of our adoption.
Yes. Right.
The, the people that fell in that gap will fall under this. Is that your understatement?
Yes. Yes, I, I, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you both.
Okay. I, I'm good with that, as you are.
I am, thank you.
Okay, very good. And we'll make this zero-one-two. Okay, I will take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I will second. If no further discussion, Vanessa, call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. And we have, let's see him on my peripheral vision. Public Safety Director Jeff Parish here to discuss what will be Resolution zero-one-three. Okay, what are we?
Good morning. Um, what this resolution is for, um, is as we just finished up with our hazard mitigation plan through the county that has now been approved through FEMA and everything else. We did that, of course, we have to do that every four or five years. Um, it's actually almost a two-year process. What we are looking at with MCM Consulting, they're the vendor, the consultant who the past two years has done this as a professional service for us. Um, they do a lot of, a lot of the other ones in our whole region. What they have, what they're offering is an annual maintenance plan. Instead of trying to jam everything in a year and a half or two years to get all these meetings together to look at all the updates, continue to go through it. This is a yearly maintenance plan, um, that is broke down, like I said, starting this year. It actually is going to help the process and as we go through in Indiana County, it is utilizing it really well. So, uh, we weren't aware that they had this, this feature or this, you know, option for us to do this until this, after all the, of this plan this year. So our proposal would be that we enter into a contract with MCM and start the annual maintenance of our hazard mitigation plan. Uh, it's paid, it's paid yearly, of course, it's broke down into a four-year payments. And it, it accounts for, we're seven thousand, almost eight thousand dollars a year. For our whole plan, whenever we do it all at one time and try to jam everything in a year's time or less than a year's time, uh, we're, we're lucky to, I think we're at forty's, fifty's, sixty's, something like that. Exactly. And that was always a matching grant. We would pay for part of it, uh, with FEMA. You know, they, they would, they would chip in for some too, so it was a matching. We actually have, we had money in our budget from last year whenever we finished up the project that we can pay for this year without adding any more into our budget.
You're right, my mind, you know, Morgan may not be here in body, but he's here in mind.
I already, I already took that in consideration last year, and we had that. We, we sort of had it, we kept it in our, in our hazard mitigation line.
Okay.
To carry over this year, at least to pay for this first year. Um, and I've been in contact with Aiden McKinney from Plan B and C because we work in and handling our risk of hazard mitigation.
The process, right, right.
And we have also applied for another grant earlier this year, every last month or two, once a month. And we were looking at this other hazard mitigation, uh, grant that's out there that would also encompass this. So we might even get money back from the grant to pay for this. But even if we don't, I mean, we're looking at seven, eight thousand dollars a year that we've put in our budget for that. Um, but again, this year it is covered, so.
And it is something that we have to do. We're required by law to do it, so.
We. Yes, yeah, we either do it now in little stages like this and then have the big meeting at the end.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Or we try to cram it all in, and all the meetings are months and months, then we'll sit six, eight months' time, try to do it all.
Right.
This will actually take place, I'd be honest, it's starting now. But there's also other plans or there are other, um, projects that are out there that municipalities can be made aware of or Shenango Township's a, a big incident out there with, uh, the trailer parked in the flooding. You know, we're, we're working with them, trying to get to see if we can do some of this funding for that also for the hazard mitigation, and that's, that's the main thing, keep the plan up to date.
Yes.
But as well as saying that, we pay a big price and try to jam everything in a year to.
Right.
Or we constantly keep them paying throughout the time, which will make a lot more streamlined, whatever, you know, each time.
It, it makes sense. And let me ask you this, is, is this, um, all of you municipalities have to have, is this fall into line with they have to have their plan? I remember in, in a meeting where some municipalities had to be roped, you know, hand-walk through the process.
Yes.
And I remember saying that, you know, until that time comes where they need to have that plan
There was still some. Yes.
and then the plan is not there and then the issue does not get paid for. So I think actually doing it yearly, just thinking off the top of my head, doing it yearly brings that to light. If there is an incident happening, like the, the, the trailer park. And I'm sure the Shenango commis, the, uh, supervisors are on top of everything there.
Oh, they are, they are on that, yes.
That they, you know, maybe one of those municipalities that are a little reluctant to commit to doing this plan will, you can say, do you understand, you know, Shenango was able to get these, this funding because of their plan they submitted?
Yeah, and, and thank God, I mean, we don't use the hazard mitigation a lot, which is a good thing.
Yeah. Right. Right.
But we do our, you know, we're prone to a lot of flooding. And, and that's part of it where it comes into play also. But any type of disaster, hazard mitigation, it is there.
Yes.
If a municipality does not approve the plan, then they are not available for funding. Um, and we try to get a hundred percent, and I think this year we did get a hundred percent. Uh, the last plan that we did, there was a couple that held out, rather it's for their. And it is, it's not obvious, they didn't do it on purpose. It's either they didn't know about it or it was just, you know, people involved dropped the ball. Uh, it, it's just one of those things that we reach out and, and what would happen is when they would say, hey, you know, can you help us with this? We're gonna help.
Right.
But in order to be eligible to get funding, then I'm sorry, but you have to, you have to approve. You have to be part of this process to do it.
Yes.
We want everybody's input. Because the more projects that we put in here that we can identify, that opens up a lot more avenues for more funding for those municipalities.
Right.
I mean, we don't get any money, of course, it's a county, we don't have any facilities like that. But we're just doing it that for all the local municipalities. And, and we do the, you know, the, the major, major hard work in, in getting everything done for them. And all they do is adopt it and sign off on it.
Yes, yeah. There you go. Okay, very good. Uh, Dan, any, anything on that? Okay. All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we will, uh, hearing no further comment, I will take a motion to accept, uh, Resolution twenty-two zero-one-three.
I'll show room.
I will second. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then the next on the agenda is, um, the assessor's office that I believe, um, I don't know that we are, um, in order to move forward on that. So I believe that there, it's, it's necessary that we table that, um, that motion for now. Take a, uh, a motion to, to table that resolution.
And that. That request was made by the assessor.
By the assessor, yes.
So I'll certainly respect his request and I'll move that we table, uh, the matter that is on the agenda as it relates to the assessors and hopefully next week we can address it from there then.
And I will second. Any further discussion on that now? Okay, Vanessa, call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, very good. Uh, the next one is, uh, I know Michael was down here earlier, but as you said, Dan, in the parking lot, saying for the, um, for the jurors to come in, he is actually attending to the jurors for court this morning. There's a resolution and it will be Resolution twenty-two zero-one-four to discuss and possibly approved and to enter a contract with Pitney Bose for the postage machine at DJ DJ Cartwright's office in, like, letters mixed up. And this is, this is just a, a, uh, contract renewal of something that we do. They, they have to have their postage machines and, um, I would see.
One.
Discussing or discuss need for that. I will take a motion.
I'll make a set. Yeah, I'll make that one.
Okay, and I will second it. Um, no further discussion on that. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Spielvogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. And then, last but not least.
I know, you always say the best for that.
This is the latest, Mr. Michael Kirk was here. This is contract.
Thank you.
And the, and the, and the, uh, paperwork, thank you so much. To, um, you know, resolution.
Yeah, and, and it's actually, we used them in eighteen-nineteen.
Okay.
So it's a new one, really, it's a renewal, but, uh, we have two kids there with adoption connection.
And we've used them before, as you stated, and, and they did, would work for us, so, um, I, I have, I have no further comment. Dan?
No, I'm, I'm fine if you're recommending.
Oh, Jeff has a question.
Can we, can we just make an, uh, an adjustment or amend it on the, uh, at the bottom where, where we sign, it says twenty-twenty-one, I'm assuming it's twenty-twenty-two?
On both of them.
Are you okay with us making that?
Twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two.
Down here, on the actual.
Oh, I was wondering, yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
It's in the body of it where we would, you know, know there'd be resolved, purchase agreement, July one, twenty-one, two-two-thirty, twenty-two.
Yeah, no problem.
Do we have to take a formal motion on that or just?
Uh, I think, I think we're. At all, I think, I think we're fine noting.
Just correct, right, because it's in the body that those are, that's the, the time period that we want. Okay, very good. Good catch, Jeff.
This time of year, I know when I, when I write checks, you've got to catch yourself.
You have to make sure you know, I know.
This is an example of that.
Absolutely. Okay, then, um, hearing nothing further, I will take a motion to accept Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero-one-five.
I'll make the motion.
I will second. Any further discussion? Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Uh, we have no administr-, administrative transfers, no regulations on the tables, table. No issues to amend, we have no ordinances, um, our announcements. I will say, our next meeting is ten o'clock, for the Commissioners' meeting, ten o'clock, Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. And we do have a prison board meeting tomorrow, here in the Commissioners' room, at twelve noon. I think that's it for announcements and, okay. Additional public comment? Okay. I will adjourn this January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two Commissioners' meeting. Thank you. Alrighty, okay, very good.